And at this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Landre.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Walshiger.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here. If you'd all rise, the pledge of allegiance will be led by trustee Landre.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, if anybody would like to make comments from the public for items that are not on the agenda.
I'd like to make a comment on the parking signs. Has there been any input? We have the largest event in the village, and we don't have any parking signs up to tell people where to go.
I was going to include that in announcements since it wasn't on the agenda, but seeing that you made public comments on it, in announcements, I am going to make a comment on that. Yes. Thank you.
That's what's my concern.
Any other public comments?
Can I take on to what he just said on comments?
As a public comment, sure.
As a public comment at the street down some, I hope this is public, someone did come up and mention to me about the painting, the parking spots, which is why I did hand it out the map, and that goes along with what you're going to say in announcements, that people are very up on it.
Good. Thank you. Any other public comments? At this time, since there are no other public comments for items that are not on the agenda, we'll get to the items that are. The first item is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from the meeting that was held on July 9th, 2018.
Awesome.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have the consideration to approve the vouchers for payments. That is for the amount of $164,354.67.
I move we pay bills for $164,354.67.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the bills. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Abstained.
That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have our actions related to licenses and permits. That license list, as has been received and was in the packet, these are for bartenders' operators licenses expiring June 30th, 2020. These are for Thomas Russo, Brady Fetzer, Elizabeth Lidle, Lisa Kircher, Corey Gastro, Shelley DePresse, Colton Weber. The interim police chief and village clerk recommend approval of the licenses listed.
I move we approve the licenses.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the licenses as listed. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next items we have are items referred from the July 16th Plan Commission meeting. First item is consideration of a motion to approve a conditional use for Lafarge Aggregates Meyer Material Company at 700 West Capital Drive. I believe that they are here to speak on that, if the board would request that they speak on that. I believe they are, you know?
I don't think they are.
Never mind, I misspoke, and I believe that they are, may not be here.
So this is for the, well, I'll refer to it as the former pit property, the Meyer pit property out at 700 West Capital Drive. The request is to, the original request came in for a temporary conditional use permit to authorize crushing of the concrete spoils that are on the site and have been accumulating there for decades. At the, at the time that came in, staff kind of reviewed the record for the property, and while all of the uses in the Q1, the quarrying district, are conditional uses, we couldn't identify a written conditional use permit for the things that are going on at the property. So we decided that it was appropriate to ask the Plan Commission and the village board to consider all of the items that are going on at the property, which include a ready-mix plant operated by Ozinga, the, the aggregate activities by Meyer and Lafarge, one and the same, and the utility operations or utility contractor activities by Intercon. So the condition, the Plan Commission did review that, held a public hearing on those matters, and recommended a conditional use permit that would authorize all of those activities at the site. I'll mention the high points of the recommended conditional use permit. Probably the most pressing is the matter related to the crushing activity. They have recommended a permit that would authorize that activity from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, until May 31st of next year. That's certainly enough time, based on the testimony of the contractor, or rather of the petitioner, to make that happen. There are requirements related to adhering to the village's performance requirements related to dust, lighting, et cetera, et cetera. Also, the other operations are allowed to continue on that site from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is similar to the requirements that we have placed on the operation across the street, which is a cement facility. Otherwise, the, the standards are generally the same. Oh, I will mention one more. Traffic from the site, that is, I refer to it in the, in the conditional use permit as commercial traffic from the site, is required to enter and exit directly from Highway 83 as opposed to taking other routes. We specifically refer to commercial traffic because we did not want to discourage employees, for example, from getting in their vehicle and coming on downtown and having lunch or what have you. So it doesn't imply to employees in and out in their own personal vehicles, but it does apply to commercial traffic in and out of the site unless, of course, they have a local activity. Otherwise, the, the standard types of requirements apply, dust control, as I mentioned, trash, and all those other things in accordance with the code. So the, the CUP is drafted with those in it as a recommendation from the Plan Commission for the village board's consideration.
I move we approve the conditional use permit.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Are they going to crush all that old concrete that's in the back?
That is their intent. They will crush that and then sell that product for fill.
Do they know what's in that?
I'm sure they have an idea, but they'll find all sorts of fun things, I'm sure.
Is there a noise?
I was going to ask the same thing.
Problem with crushing all that?
It's not that bad.
I imagine there's got to be noise.
So I'll make a couple of comments on that. As trustee Anson alludes to, it's not that bad, so to speak. The unit itself is equipped to help deaden that sound as well. Not only does the village, of course, have a sound requirement, which they were advised of and felt they could meet based on the materials they presented as part of the testimony, but lastly, I'll add that the activity will take place at the bottom of that bowl. And that, those high walls that really protect most of the residential properties in the area should suffice if there is any significant sound escape. That coupled with the seven to four should really help that situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd have to say if, the only way anybody's really going to be bothered by it or hear it is if the wind's blowing just exactly right towards somebody's house, and then it's not going to be overwhelming or terrible. Done a really good job with those machines to keep them quieter.
Mm-hmm.
Along with that, one thing that this did obviously come up at the Plan Commission meeting and speaking about the noise, and when you look at the overview map, there is buffering by, you know, foliage trees and stuff like that. That does make a difference, you know, obviously, sound waves moving through it causes it to go up or stop, and the closest residential areas were taken into account in looking into this. And also importantly, there is this bunch of old, what happened is they used to kind of dump out the leftover concrete in the trucks, and that builds up. So along with that, one thing I'm happy about is that there is a portion of this that is, I mean, it's recycling. It's taking old concrete and reusing it to be able to be, to be sold. So I think that that's great, as opposed to it just being covered with dirt and who knows what happens on top of it. There is recycling. Exactly.
Well, it's cleaning up, it's cleaning up the area.
Yes.
For future use.
Exactly.
That's what you have to look at.
Yep.
So with that, any other discussion? All in favor of accepting that conditional use permit? Aye. All opposed? That conditional use permit is granted.
Maybe the police department can use that with, you know, powder and.
The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve an extraterritorial certified survey map for the combining of parcels west of Oakwood Grove Road in the town of Delafield.
This is a fairly straightforward concept here. Again, town of Delafield, we have authority within a mile and a half of the village's corporate limits that we share with any other incorporated entities around us. This happens to be that we're closest between us and Delafield and maybe Peewaiki. We are the closest, so we get to do the review. This is a straight-up combination of four parcels, two of which are substantial in size, they're the normal residential lots, two of which are pieces that have been acquired by the property owner over the years from his neighbors. The one change that did come into play right at the Plan Commission was the fact that the county is requesting that a portion, or the town, I don't know which frankly, is requesting a six-foot dedication of road to Oakwood Grove. Certainly, that's not an issue. Plan Commission was fine with that, so it is recommended for approval.
Will they be using our water?
They will not. This.
Or sort of.
No. No changes, no anything, no annexation, no services from us. It's just a combination, and because it's close to the village, we get to look at it.
I move we approve. I second.
It's been moved and seconded, public comments?
Yes, my name is Richard Clark.
You can step up to the podium. Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Richard Clark, and I am the owner of the four lots, and I do have the new latest and greatest CSM for Jeff's signature at your convenience, so I'm not sure what to do with, you know, with the CSM at this time.
Okay, you can bring it up, sure.
Is that east of the horse farm?
Thank you.
I'm not sure where the horse farm is. Well, I mean, where the riding stable is, I don't know. My property.
No, I'm not even sure where that property is.
Do you mind waiting till after it's signed the signature? Thank you.
I think I'm in the wrong place.
You got the name and everything? Okay. Any other, any other discussion on that, that item? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve a certified survey map, lot line adjustments and easements for the properties at 460 and 480 Cardinal Lane.
There are some folks from this particular one in, in the audience, I think it's the owner and the surveyor in this case, but I will mention, this is really, again, just a minor adjustment of a lot line, and probably the more significant issue is cleaning up of some easements that were on the property in order to prepare for a sale of one of the lots. During consideration of this particular CSM, this is actually a re-division of an old, an older CSM, during consideration of the original CSM in 1993, the Plan Commission observed that the property corner was in the middle of the then-existing driveway and requested, that is, the driveway exiting onto Cardinal Lane. At that time, the Plan Commission requested an easement to ensure that the property owner there would, would have appropriate access, should it ever be a separate owner. And so that easement was simply added to the CSM as a note, granting both of the properties access over all pavement of the other property owner. So it was a very broad blanket easement. And as I mentioned, in preparation for the sale, it's staff's understanding that they're trying to clean all of that up, and they have moved the property marker in the front so that the existing driveway is no longer split by the property line. It is wholly contained on Lot 1, and they have extinguished the easement that was created in that old CSM for the properties and intend to manage the easement at the rear of Lot 1, that is, for access to the rear of Lot 1, as a private matter rather than one between, that involves the village. The village's easements for sanitary stow are shown on this map and still exist. We Energy's easements for utilities are shown on this map and still exist. The Plan Commission considered the matter of the private easement for the rear access at their meeting and decided it was acceptable to them that it be handled as a private matter and has recommended approval of the CSM as drafted and shown here.
I have a question about it, because I did look at this property at one point, and you actually, unless something has changed, you do have to come in through this other lot to get full access to the back? And you're saying you want to do that privately instead of public, on record? Is that correct? And I'm wondering why. I, I mean, if I was buying that, that piece of property that I love, I would want it on record so that if somebody else took over Lot Number 2, I wouldn't have to go back and fight for it.
Let me just clarify what my comment was.
Okay.
There would still be an easement that would get recorded at the Register of Deeds and in that regard be a public easement.
Okay.
It's just that it was not a matter that the Plan Commission or the village board was being asked to consider or deal with.
Okay.
So there still would be an easement, frankly, I've seen it, but it wasn't a matter that really required any action by the village because it was a private matter.
Okay.
As long, the village is concerned, both in '93 and I think it should be as today, to ensure that there is an access point to that Lot Number 1 from the public right-of-way. One of the things the Plan Commission noted was that in the event that there wasn't an agreement and there couldn't be an access from the rear through the neighboring parcel, Lot 2, it would be possible, and building commissioner or building and zoning official Hussinger thought it was true, it would be possible to sneak a driveway through from the front around the house to the back. Wouldn't be pretty, wouldn't be the most desirable thing, but it is possible to get to the back of the house from the front.
Is the, the whole area here to the north, this is all, is this all swamp? I know this is swamp, but is this also, could they not come out that on, was that Norton?
No, you can see kind of on the CSM, you see that sort of speckled, if you really zoomed in on that, it's intended to represent little like ferns or.
I do now see that.
Plants.
Yeah.
So you see that goes all the way up to the north property line.
Okay.
In other words, no, there is no access off of Norton.
Okay.
We do not have a motion on the floor, just.
I make a motion to approve the, are we approving the survey map?
Yes.
Certified survey map, yes.
Yeah, the certified survey map with the lot line adjustment of easements for properties at 640 and 680 Cardinal Lane.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Then motion is carried. The last of the items that came from the July 16th Plan Commission meeting, consideration of a.
Wait, hold on.
Give us a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I just wanted to.
Can you step up to the podium, please?
He's going to clarify the address, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just reading what was on here.
You misread it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It says it's 460 and 480, as opposed to 660 and 680.
You are correct. Sorry. You don't want to move, huh?
I just figured that's what he was going to do. I kind of was going to let it roll.
With the motion being made for that address, I think we're all aware, but will the board allow, that we all know that the address is as listed, and did the motion maker and the seconder?
460 and 480.
Okay.
Yes.
460 and 480. Everybody here in attendance and up here on the board is in agreement, including our administrator and our clerk, so we're all on the same page.
Thanks, John.
All right. So with that, no, I guess, I don't think.
You're done. You made your motion.
Thank you.
I'm figuring out what I'm.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't catch the hand.
You're on the Coventry piece.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the general location for a temporary cellular tower on the Coventry Water Tower site during upcoming tower painting scheduled for fall 2018. This was at the Plan Commission meeting, and this one is, I mean, simply, if anybody's ever seen a water tower get painted, so that stuff doesn't go flying everywhere, they tarp it or canopy it, or however you want, they blanket it. So you'll literally, it looks like it's got a big blanket over that. Obviously, all those antennas on top there have been removed. Part of our agreement, we are not paying for it, it's part of the agreement, the cellular antenna company has to pay for that, but they will build a temporary tower so that service is still the same in the village while the work is done on the water tower, and then, again, they pay and they then replace them properly, but that's what this item is for.
And so the request is to authorize that location, which is generally north and west of the tower, 25 feet away from the edge of the bulb, and the final sighting will occur when they actually stick an auger in the ground and drill the hole.
How move we approve this site location for the tower?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the temporary cellular tower at the Coventry location. Any other, any discussion?
I might just mention for the edification of the board, you may know that the Plan Commission items get sent to the neighbors. We use a 600-foot diameter from the edge of the property, so that's probably 108, 140 to 180 or so residents were notified of this particular item. And the reason I mention that is because, of course, cellular antennas can be a hot button. We had one individual come into the meeting, and actually, he wanted to know more about the painting activity than he did about the cellular tower.
Uh-huh.
So word gets out, and that was part of the reason we wanted to make sure that the Plan Commission and the village board looked at this, despite the fact that staff thought it was more of a permit issue. We wanted to make sure that the public had the opportunity to see, so.
Yes, and I think I, I wasn't thinking of this before, but I'm thinking of it now. There was a time when I got some complaints because there was some, the way they were driving into the area, the people doing work at the water tower, previously on a completely different issue, you know, they had just, the neighbors weren't real happy about it. They sent an email and a phone call into the village, and I just want to say, in case anything like that happens again, the last time it happened, the village was right on top of it, to the point where a member of the DPW went right over there to the person that made the complaint, took care of it, explained to him that the village, you know, doesn't accept that, and they, they did get it taken care of, but the village is there to protect the citizen, so if you do have something like that, feel free to call into the village, call a trustee, call me, and if the trustees or myself get it, we'll pass it on to DPW or administrator, either or, but we'll take care of it.
Yep.
At least when they paint Heartland on it, if they don't complete Heartland all the way.
I can guarantee you that depending on the spelling of Heartland, it's something we don't have to worry about, but if it was, that would have been part of the contract on how, on the way that they painted.
Well, sausage had a little bit of.
I agree.
It's funny.
So with that.
You need to take your vote.
No, I know. I'm debating on whether to ask if there's any other discussion or just call the question. I'm going to just call the question. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. On to the next. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the award of a contract, I'm not sure, Belfus Corporation of Mistigal, in the amount of $29,000 for reconstruction of the Nixon Park baseball field. I do want to add that I'm very happy with the fact that we budgeted $36,000 for this project. This has been a project that's been intended by the village, my understanding is for a few years, at least three. And, but we're, it's coming in that far under budget, I think that that's fantastic, so I'm just highlighting, I think that that's, that's great. Dave Feltnor went and got the, the bids on it. We didn't get as many as we were hoping, it doesn't sound like. I don't even know if we got the full three, but, because some people didn't have time, but we're coming in quite a bit under budget. I mean, that's, what is that, 20%? Almost.
Sure.
Almost 20% under budget.
Can we use the rest of it to put in a basketball court?
I don't, unfortunately, that item's not on the agenda, but.
I know, I'm sorry.
So that.
I don't have anything to add.
That item's been read, and that work will be done this year.
Correct.
Unless something catastrophic happens, like just constant rain and rain and rain or something.
I have a question for Dave. How well do we know this company? Have they done work for us in the past?
I don't know that they have done any work for us in the past, but they have done a great deal of work in the area and nationwide, so.
Okay.
The staff is very comfortable with their capabilities. This is one of their special, this is their specialty.
Okay.
Athletic fields.
I had a little bit of time, and I, having the concrete business for those years and doing excavating, I kind of broke it down myself, and it, that's a good number. There's a lot of work involved in what they're going to do.
Yeah.
The explanation of it doesn't, doesn't do it justice in what they really have to do there to get the field the way we want it.
I felt very happy with the number as well.
We've been after that for two or three years, and it, because the players complained about the field isn't that changed.
It is. It's definitely time for it to be redone. I did work, and I, you know, I got my hands off to the DPW and the board and administrator Cox, we worked through this last year. I know our administrator went out and inspected it with his own eyes and looked at it and gave a lot of pointers to where there was bad spots in the field, like around the ring, so there has been work into it, and I guess I, I'm going that extra length in saying that, because I want to make sure everybody knows, when people request something in Heartland, even though you may not hear it on every agenda, people do go and look into it. So this has actually been in the works for a year. It takes time to do something this extensive, and plus, you have to work it around a baseball season and a winter, which is very difficult.
Right.
So there's a small window.
There is a small window.
With that, I would entertain a motion regarding this item, though, since one is not yet on the floor.
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to redo Nixon Park for $29,000 as it is in the contract. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion to adopt an updated sexual and other harassment and discrimination and retaliation policy. However, I am immediately going to move into requesting that the board, and I believe I'm within my rights to request this, it isn't complete yet, so I am, and that is the only reason, just for everybody out there, whether you're news or otherwise, it isn't complete yet with the wording, so that is why I am requesting that this either be tabled or postponed until the point at which it is done, either or, how you want to word it.
I move that we table it.
All right.
Got a postpone and a table.
Randy did.
Randy moved.
Okay.
That we table.
I moved.
And the only, I can't do it anymore.
What would be the difference between tabling?
Table usually takes a bit longer.
Tabling is just table. Just because, and this, I know this gets into the nitty-gritty, and you didn't do anything wrong. According to the rules, if you table something and it isn't taken up at the next meeting, then it's kind of like you got to just pull it back up again. If you postpone it, I suppose it's the same thing.
And that's why I postponed it.
Yeah.
He tabled, I postponed it, the same type, just so you know.
You can't bring it up without taking it off the.
Right, right.
You have no second at this point, so.
We have no second.
Because we have two different.
We have no second. If someone.
To which one? Donna's?
Either or, you could make a second to either one. Postponing means you could postpone it to a certain date or until it's complete. Tabling means you just run it through the next.
We have an idea.
I'll second for a poll.
The postpone.
Donna's.
Well, make a second to one of them, so you're not making.
We did, yeah. She made a second to the postponement, which is virtually the same thing, it just opens up for a longer window.
But you had two motions at the end of the day.
Huh?
You had two motions at the end of it.
Right.
And I seconded Donna's.
All right, Randy, would you like to hold your motion open, or would you pull that motion back?
I'll pull it back.
You pull it back. Okay, and no one seconded it, so we don't have to ask the seconder. So Randy has pulled his motion back, we've got a motion and a second on the other motion. Discussion?
Well, how long is it going to take?
Well, you got to finish one, you got that motion before you have another one.
We'll wait.
I, I can't, I didn't hear what you said.
You said we'll wait.
I said discussion.
We're waiting.
I said we'll wait.
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have announcements of, okay, going to go through these, we are on track today. It's going to be quick. Okay, I was with the administrator today at the WCCC meeting, one thing that you're going to hear about, or hopefully you hear about, is something that's called, and I'm going to say this as quick as I can, if you want to ask questions, call the administrator or myself, or myself, and ask, and you'll get a brief description. You can also call Waukesha County, or you can call your legislators, you can look up online, you can do whatever you want. So it's called dark store, and what it is, to put it briefly, is let's say you have a building like, not like, it, they're one of the companies that do it, but Walgreens, and it is a business in Heartland, but Walgreens is worth so much money while Walgreens is in that building, and their tax assessment is as such. Walgreens has, and other businesses, CVS, Kroger, Meyer, all these buildings, the reason they say dark store is they want to be taxed as if they're just a dark store with no tenant in it, instead of paying extra tax for the value that they're actually bringing at the time. I know that seems odd, but I'm just going to say it like that. The big part of that is, is that they believe, why should we pay taxes up here? We believe that we should pay taxes down here. However, if that were to happen, residents would have to make up that difference. This is a big issue in Wisconsin state law. If you have questions about it, you can call and ask us about it. I. and ask us about it. I prefer you email about it, 'cause it takes a little time to, to discuss. But you can also look it up online. It is something that's involved with the Wisconsin State Legislature. So that's something that came up. It is a very big issue and it's a huge issue when it comes to money and how the taxes go on whether the business is paying the tax or whether the residents are helping to fund the, the tax that Walgreens would not want, or other businesses would not want to pay or don't think they should pay.
Didn't that go into effect? Or was that still in the state?
It made it right to the finish line and I, no one knows why, but everybody presumes why, but it made it right to the finish line and they decided not to have the vote. So it didn't go through.
'Cause I know we were talking, oh, okay. So that is an effect, we're not doing it, it just hasn't-
It's still ongoing, but no, it is not an effect. Next, we have, the kids' day is Wednesday, July 25th from 9:02 in Heartland. It's an outstanding event. There's stuff all over Facebook regarding this. You can call the village and ask about it. You can ask for the, the rec director, you can ask for the administrator, anyone you wanna call, you can call a trustee or myself. The next item we have, I'm making a request here, is that we kinda finish up with deciding on the parking signs. There are two parking signs that are just outside of the entrance to the library, coming off of the street with the name of-
Hate.
Hate, which is north of the village hall, right near the entrance, coming in by the library, in between the library and beer snobs. If you drive going easterly or eastern on Hate Drive, you'll see a blue sign. If you drive going west towards Cottonwood, you will see a green and white sign. I would like to get that kinda decided in the next two weeks of people deciding, calling in, email us, however you wanna do it. Let us know. We would like your opinion. Everybody already knows what mine is. Next item is, uh, but we do, it's, we wanna know what people think.
I like the color you shared.
August 14th is a partisan primary in the village. And all voting for the partisan primary is here at the village hall. Early in-person absentee voting has begun. You can come in and go to the counter and you can early absentee in-person vote. Okay? And that's from 7:30 to 4:30 for the next two weeks. The Friday before the election, that stops. Also, we have ongoing, you may have heard, whether it be the newspaper or going throughout the village, we have the discussion on whether we wanna open that, well, we've already opened the door, whether we wanna continue walking it down that path of a community center for a historical building that has kind of come about and is or will be going on the market. I would like to kinda, I would like that also to be on the agenda for our next Village Board meeting, as we do have to make a decision on that. If that historical building is even gonna be part of something, we wouldn't want that to all of a sudden just go away without us even making a decision, just for lack of our expediency. So.
You have to check to see how you get it off historical?
It's not on the historical.
It's not, because I was told it was, so.
Well, I hope it is. I hope it is. But, oh, it is.
It is a national red listing, like, national and state listing.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was under the impression that it was not. That's good. That's a nice thing.
I thought it was and it's kinda hard to get it off.
That's a good thing, though. So with that being said, I believe that you've gotten both the items that I said I wanted on the agenda. Those are my announcements. I unfortunately was not able to attend. The rain was not very cool, I've heard, or not a good thing. But the street dance, I've heard a lot of people had a great time there. I'm sorry I missed it. I had some family things that I was helping with.
Can I make a public announcement now?
Absolutely, I'm done, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to say, for the street dance, on behalf of the chamber, that a big shout-out to the police department that was there to help us out. And just people seeing them amongst the community is just amazing. And the Heartland Fire Department. And then also Dave Cox, who happened to be there with his son and through the rain and pouring and shutting down. So it, it takes a lot to make that street dance happen. And I, I, as a resident, am extremely proud to see our police department there, our fire department there, and then the village there too. I know Ann was there, Dave was there, I was there, was there, you were there. So, yeah, it's exciting. So, that's just a big thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Jeff, could you, I'm sorry, could you just address the, if we've gotten any quotes or how, where we stand with the parking in the downtown?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was ready to say that.
'Cause I've had-
Sorry.
I have-
I do not.
We haven't gotten quotes in yet, no.
Okay. Do you know if we require, well, as an announcement, I'm, hopefully by the next meeting, I'm gonna ask that it be put on the agenda. Hopefully, we can try to fast-track them and get them in by then, or even just a estimate. Obviously, if it's too high, we might, as a village, decide not to do it. It sounds like people really like it, but I don't wanna get too far into discussion, 'cause it's not on the agenda. But I, thank you for correcting me on that. Also, Trustee Walshlager did hand out a piece of paper to people on, on her ideas of where-
The most simplified idea.
She thinks parking should be. So just, that's what that piece of paper was. I can't really discuss it much, only because it's not on the agenda and then I'd be breaking the law and I'm not gonna do that.
Correct.
A lot of notices, but still doing good on time.
I make a motion when you're done.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting 36, 37 minutes after it has begun.
For a house.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.
Good luck, be safe. Brian?